Let me get the Mashpee School Committee meeting of April 3, 2019 started. We'll call the meeting in order at 5:32. First item on the agenda is one, please.
The flag of the United States of America to the Republic for what it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, next we do the approval of the minutes from March 6, 2019. I want everybody to have a chance to look at it, see their motion.
I had a comment. I'm going to find it again. Oh, yeah. I just wanted to verify on page two, when we postponed the voting on FY '21 calendar, it says dated 12/5/19.
Oh, yes.
Motion?
And to approve the minutes from March 6, 2019 as amended.
A second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Nicole. Any other comments that could touch on that? Done?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Upstain. All right, thank you. Next we have public comment. We have one public comment signed up for, and that's Phyllis Sprout.
This doesn't involve any money, so it's okay.
Thank you. Oh, that's great.
That's nice. I like that. So, what?
Thank you, please.
Thank you. Phyllis Sprout, Quinnaquist Avenue, Mashpee, Massachusetts. I've just handed out a basic form about funded federally funded surveys. And I'm coming to you because a friend of mine who has a grandson in another school district came back with a report that he had this survey that asked some very personal questions. And when the grandparents said, well, we didn't know about it because the grandparents had the custody of the child, oh, it was in the backpack somewhere. It got lost in the shuffle. And this kind of happens a lot. And according to the guidelines here, everybody who hands out surveys to students with these very particular eight points is supposed to notify the parents, and that's wonderful. They don't have to send the survey to the parents, but they do have to notify it. So I was hoping that the school committee could consider, if they haven't done so already, to inform the parents through email or text that their students are going to be given a survey. These guidelines are a little bit older, and I think we have the advantage of a lot more electronic communication between the school district and the parents. And the parents really are in charge of the education of their children. And when a survey is asking personal questions, and it does allow for that, this is when the notification to the parents is critical. And I would also like the, a copy of the survey to be at the principal's office, and hopefully the parent would, I'd like a static display so that if a parent says, is there a survey coming up? I don't know. You could go to the teacher's portal, and the survey would be there for viewing. That way, the school is covered. You want everybody to be covered and say, we've given adequate notice, we've done the best we can. Because parents can opt out of these surveys if they want to, and that's their decision. I mean, I'm all about parents' rights, and parents are usually, many of them are about protecting the innocence of their children. And the eight points here, they're, they're kind of, you have to consider some of them intrusive. Now, there may be justification for asking questions that include those eight points, but I would like to see the parents of this town be fully informed whenever a survey like this is coming down. And I defer to your expertise on surveys because you may have already covered this.
Well, just in looking at those points, except for three of them, we don't ever survey on those topics. And the three that are the mental and psychological problems, sexual behavior and attitudes, and illegal or incriminating behavior is all done with parental permission.
I'll thank, I'm sure, yes, it has to be by federal law. It does. I'm just asking that the school committee amend the policy about parental notification to include electronic parental notification. That's basically it. And, yeah.
Thank you, Phyllis. I appreciate the information.
Yeah, thanks for making us aware.
We do not have any other further public comment. So we'll move on. It appears that the representative for the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe is not currently here, so at that time, Michelle, we will go back to it. So next on the agenda, we have the report of the superintendent. I'll turn it over to Mrs. DeBoer.
So we have the three school reports. Control Bell's report gives 411 students specifically, like Scott Shepard and Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe for their performances during Wampanoag's celebration week. He thanks the local police and the fire staff for joining students during lunches. Thanks to PTO for sponsoring the Blacklight Dance, and to the librarian Meg Smith, Jen Kenny, and Jana McNally, who are all literacy people, for very well-attended Dr. Seuss Night, and also thanking Denise Brony as the FCE coordinator for organizing technology and parenting workshops. And some of my sharing out in the article that's going to be in the paper, but just for those watching at home, I want to make sure for whom's, I wanted to highlight that all of the students recently participated in anti-bullying assemblies that were presented by the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center out of Goodwater State University. So that was, that was very well, well-received and with learning involved in that. Any questions for Mr. DeBoer or Phyllis Sprout?
Just a question in regard to chronic absenteeism, by far higher than any of the other schools. Been a bad winter, huh?
It's been a very bad winter for us. A lot of the illnesses have taken children for multiple days at a time, four or five days. And that was kind of a trend in taking out adults as well.
All right. Thank you.
Next, we have the Quashtown School Report. Principal O'Brien, 500 students in attendance, and again, going to, I want to highlight from the newsletter. Their recent pennies for patients initiative raised $3,869 for the leukemia and lymphoma society, and I think their goal was 2019.
Yes.
I was like, that's an amazing goal, collection there. The National Honor Society ran their jump rope for heart. They raised $1,817 for the American Heart Association. Grade four students and teachers were recently visited by author Lauren Wolf. Mrs. Wolf is the recipient of the Scott Odell Award for historical fiction for her novel Beyond the Bright Sea, and the setting of that novel is on, is Cuddy Hunk and Pennycie's Islands. And now the fourth graders, each class will go individually to Pennycie's Island in June. And I think that's pretty exciting adventure for our students. I also want to highlight that Southport Falcons are making a difference at the Quashtown School. Approximately 30 students in grade three through six are knitting and crocheting every Wednesday, and we have three amazing Southport volunteers who help Mrs. Gagat do that. And then also, that students from China are coming back to visit the Quashtown School for a week. They are elementary-age students, and they will be here hopefully the week of May 17th through the 20th. So we are looking for most candidates.
Sign me up. Oh, absolutely.
I'll write them down.
Can I ask a question real quick, since we, I'll jump on Don's bandwagon. I was wondering, I mean, I know that this chronic absenteeism is force-fed, the formula's force-fed on how we need to track that because of, is it MCAS 2.4, or what are we calling it now?
Next generation.
Next generation, MCAS. And it's interesting, because how are we determining our attendance rate then? Just average?
No, so through Sean Maroney, and they're tracking all the kids who up to a certain point have hit that 10 percent absenteeism.
Well, I get the absenteeism part. I'm talking about the attendance rate. So because if you look at our attendance rate, it's almost 97, it's 96 percent, which seems like a very healthy number. But yet, we're 15, almost 16 percent chronic absenteeism.
It is calculated through Power School, that attendance rate, but it is really, the chronically absent is the number that had reached over 10 percent of their enrollment.
Right.
So that could be the same speed that's absent over and over again, that plays into that absent, chronic absenteeism, but...
So if you have one student out of 500, the same student always absent, it doesn't really affect attendance rate, but it drastically affects the...
Right.
Yeah, I got it. I got it. Okay, cool.
And I know you're about to go to the high school one, but it's interesting to me, the vast difference between the high school. I almost wonder whether the numbers being calculated are the same.
For my guess is...
Yeah, that we can go from almost 16 percent at the Quashtown School to less than a percent at the middle high school.
I don't think that's smart.
That seems remarkable.
So, yeah.
They're going to show up whether they're almost on deathbed.
Yeah.
If they want to be there.
And just such a question, where's Mark? I did want to share, I'm very proud of Mark. So he is actually right now on his way to Iowa because he was asked to be keynote speaker at the Iowa State Estes Conference and Workshop for High Schools. And it's a working conference to help support high schools across the state, plan and implement MTSS at the secondary level. And so he's part of, he's doing a two-hour workshop tomorrow, that's a working workshop, and then on the Friday, he's part of the panel. So, shout out for Mashpee. So he's not here to answer your question. On his report, something that I did put in my article, congratulations to Junior Ashley Pellicar, and her Purple Martin Research and Management Project was recognized with an honorable mention at the Massachusetts State Science and Engineering Fair on March 16. And then also highlighting on March 22 was the Eighth Annual Higher Education Fair. Representatives from 50 colleges, universities, technical and trade schools, and military branches met for students in grades eight through 11. And one of the goals of the fair is help students find their best fit and make them aware of the different types of opportunities and options that are available for them and what the admission requirements are. And I also know that today was the Credit for Life Fair, which is a senior activity in trying to teach them to be financially literate. So that's a good thing to do. And then I want to read a few things from this, actually, I'm going to go to Hope with the first one, which has to, and it's kind of merged into correspondence, but it's also in the article, so if you want to...
Oh, yes.
Want to share about the grant?
So we wrote, Mr. Looney, Mr. Bellastracci, Mrs. Kett, and I wrote a grant in January to become, to receive a designation as an Innovation Pathway School at the high school. And we just found out that it was awarded, so what that means is we are going to be designated, and we're the first program at comprehensive high school in this region. So usually, these grants will go to tech schools, but because we have such a robust CTE program, we're able to do it here. So we, our pathway is in advanced manufacturing, and so the students who enroll in this pathway, the requirements are that they take at least two college-level classes, which could be dual enrollment AP. We have virtual options for college-level classes that we wrote into the grant that'll be able to take. They also have to take two technical classes, which they're all doing anyway, and then they'll have a paid internship in their senior year in advanced manufacturing. So that might be through plumbing, it might be through working interning at some corporate white, and so forth. We have a bunch of community partners. And when they leave, they'll have also industry-recognized credentials. So right now, they all just got trained in the OSHA 10-hour training, but there's a slew of advanced manufacturing credentials that they'll also receive as part of this designation. And so when they leave high school, they will be able to walk into really well-paying jobs, and they'll have work experiences in the region, so they will have those connections already. Or they can go into college and study, or whatever they want, but they'll have some of the coursework underneath their belt already. So it's $120,600 over five years, and we were really, really excited that we were the first comprehensive high school around to be designated.
Congratulations.
That's awesome.
It's a great opportunity for our kids.
Absolutely.
And I really, really appreciate the work of that team, that together is, and I will say, of a lot of the nitty-gritty pieces that we spent a long time on the trip as well.
What was the financial piece of it?
$120,600 over five years.
Also, in terms of the middle high school, we're proud to announce that the International Technology and Engineering Educator Association, which is ITEEA, recently recognized Mashpee Middle High School's Career and Technical Education Program with their Program Excellence Award. Mashpee is one of only 37 programs worldwide to earn this prestigious award, and Mr. Looney and Mrs. Pow went to campus to be part of this. It wasn't only an award ceremony, it was a workshop, so it kind of PD for them. Skylah's not here, but I'm going to highlight that she's been elected, selected by the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women as one of the Commonwealth's Unsung Heroines 2019. Annual unsung heroine honors are given to incredible women who have been nominated by legislators from their districts and selected for their contributions to their community and the Commonwealth. Unsunned heroines are women who don't always make the news, but truly make a difference in their communities, businesses, or volunteer endeavors. Skylah has been selected because she's a young woman who, without fanfare or recognition, uses her time, talent, spirit, and enthusiasm to enrich the lives of others. She was nominated by State Senator John Zier, and she was... Also, from the high school, we have honor, honor society inductees, Aiden Gadu, David McKelvey, Hannah Nielsen, Peter Gonzo, Edwarta Zanoni, Raylan Aguilar, William Baker, Jared Barr, Alexia Brandt, Alexis Bryant, Sierra Casey, Chapel Fancher, Matthew Fish, Ryan Hendricks, Anna Jolson, Ben Kennedy, Taylor LaCava, Bridget O'Neill, Shivani Patel, Sidney Pinhack, Sidney Puchel, Jessica Rulo, Clara Stein, Sean Smith, Zach Taylor, Zach, Jack Vanitsky, Nathan Ware, and Logan Westcott. And that ceremony was a couple weeks ago, and so congratulations to all of those hard-working students. Also, at the high school, members of the HOSIP Club, which is Health Occupation Students of America, recently competed in the state HOSIP competition, this was on Saturday. Falcons soared to first and second place in research persuasive writing and speaking, and second place in health career display/interview skills. Those students are Jordan Willis, Matthew Fish, Olivia Olivera, and Edwarta Zanoni. And thank you to Effie Purdy and Joyce O'Connor, who accompanied those students to that event. High school's been busy, but safe. And this is part of Tewary's, Matt Tewary's report. Congratulations to Winter Sports Social League All-Stars Devon Ford, boys basketball; Amaya Peters and Ashley Pellicar, girls basketball; Kelly Spans, girls winter track; Christopher Hutchenreider, boys winter track; and Ava Kelly, Emma Nunes, and Hannah Burnett for gymnastics in the Cranberry League. Senior Devon Ford leaves Mashpee High School as the school's all-time leading scorer in boys basketball. And also, congratulations to Mashpee senior football players Devon Ford and Xavier Gonzo, who were named to the Massachusetts High School Football Coaches Association Super 26 All-State Team in March. The Super 26 team is the best 26 football players in the state, public or private school, and both of them are selected to play in the Shriners game. Final kudos to Blue Falcon Theater Company for their outstanding production of the 25th Annual Katniss Evergreen. Especially the special guest.
Yes, yes. Doctor Hanscom.
No, you are a dancer.
Just wanted to let you know that she misspelled cow.
You are a dancer, and I did not know.
I can move. Can I make one comment? So I was going to just make, if I may. I love that hearing about, we don't do a good job, I think, of advertising. I know we talk about it, and we put it in the newspaper, and we're just getting together as outreach and trying to figure out things, but I would love to find a way to stand on the roof of this building and scream out some of the stuff that you were just talking about.
Well, I hope that they'll come and do a separate story on that.
Yeah. And the reason I'm bringing it up is, you know, we sat in front of the finance committee this year, and one of the questions that they, where they were talking about was the, our price per pupil. Now, you can't compare our price per pupil to other schools because we don't own our own buildings, and all that money is included in that price, but a bullet point of 10 things like that that you just talked about, that's why it costs X thousands of dollars for each one of our students, so. And we're getting, I think we're getting a spectacular return on the investment. Editorial complete. Thank you, sir.
Okay, then we also, so we go to Dr. Curly's report, and if you have any questions on that, I know, John, you had a couple.
Yep.
Which you might want to bring up, but there's 268 students at the end of March, or that's the date of this report, on receiving special education services.
Don?
Sure. So, one of my questions was, when I looked at this report compared to the other report in the packet with the total, totals for the schools, which is on page 10, for out-of-district for February, that report was showing 20 individuals, and Dr. Curly's report was showing 18. And I was trying to figure out, was this, which one was right?
Right. So I think when I had submitted that February report was 20, that's where Dale brought that number from. But then when we were doing the March report, it gets pretty confusing because I have two different categories there. I've got the AZAR and the out-of-district, and sometimes students toggle between different categories. So what happened in February was a student that counted extra from two different categories. So she was counting the nine and then the R. So I went back and switched, but I took up two instead of one, so it should have been actually 19. So it wasn't 20, or it's like...
None of the above. Did that answer the question?
So I let Dale know that, so it'll be reflected in next month, as February will be 19.
Okay. So, February on, all reports should be 19.
So it should be 19, and then the bottom one should actually be 274.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
So is March still 20?
Yeah, March is still 20. And it's such a, it's difficult, it can change daily, some of these numbers, so.
All right. I don't have in front of me the other question I asked you, and my guess is that's a lengthy answer.
It's a lengthy answer, and not at one time. So a general, a general answer to it, which is basically, how do we evaluate programs and how are we doing the district in terms of special education? And it's a lengthy answer, both individuals, but if we're looking at overall, the state has an auditing system where they come in every so often and audit us in terms of how we're meeting and obvious different standards, and then they give us a report, which is shared with, and it becomes a public document, and shared with everybody at that time. So we just underwent our mid-site review last year, and then, I think several years we have our goal, which is called a court, we have pulled it in.
So that's how the state evaluates us, correct?
Yeah.
How do we evaluate ourselves?
So we take the information from them, and we look at our programming, and we look at what's been done, where are we seeing our issues. But I mean, there's a, it's a very lengthy answer to get into, kind of, you know...
So I would defer that maybe this be brought up at a subsequent meeting, where we can go more in-depth, and would request that the chair consider adding that at some point to a future meeting?
Absolutely. We'll see. I know next month is probably going to be a little busy, but we'll see what that turns out to be.
All right. Thank you.
Can I ask one question too? So, you know, when we were discussing money, we often talk about how kids today are coming into our schools needing more from us, and it's not always special education, but I'm just curious if we, do we track these numbers the same? So like, if we went back 10 years, would we be able to know what our numbers were for March of...
Yeah, we do have, I don't know if I can get 10 years, but I know we at least have five years, but I know, because you've always sort of pointed out, like, if we live from, just because you have to track, like, just in Power School.
So the tracking, it should be the same, it should be comparable?
An IEP is an IEP, and that's designed to be valid, and that's when you start to calculate, and that's been...
Okay. I'd be curious, can we have a look at that?
Yes, and the expectation is that it is, we are able to succeed and make the numbers decline because of the MTSS approaching, tier of instruction, tier of information, so it's like, and... Also, the, what's most important from a financial perspective is the level of need for your student on an IEP. So if you have fewer students, but their level of severity and their level of service is much higher, that's going to be a different, so it is difficult to make the causal connection.
Yeah.
If I may, go ahead, Don.
So, I was not asking from a cost perspective, although it's hard to believe. I, I'm, I think what I was truly asking for, and I, my last point on it was, how do we, how do we measure, or how do we, what do we view as success? And so, I'll leave it for a subsequent conversation, but that was really what I was looking for.
And I'm just jumping on with Nicole, and I think my only concern or caution is that we can't look at it in a vacuum, right? I mean, these numbers, because I know we, you know, part of having free preschool is to identify people early and keep them off IEPs, and I'm sure that we could use some kind of data, the STAR data, or something like that, or one of the mini metrics that we use to glance at. I think this is probably a much harder question to answer.
Yeah, which ties back into what Donovan was asking.
Right. Good stuff.
That's interesting, you know, especially when the FinCom guy was like, well, what are our, have our MCAS scores gone up, or have our, you know, and when you think about providing support for what we're asking for, it would be, you know, it'd be interesting to look at how that's changed, in a, in a meaningful way, not maybe the way I suggested, but...
No, yours is just as good, it's just, it's sort of level of need becomes really tricky.
Well, next year, we should have a pie chart, and one of them is what the state looks like at, and you can have a 90, 90 percent of the pie chart is MCAS.
Yeah.
And say what we look at, and that MCAS can be like a little bit...
Picture of our children.
Yeah, exactly.
As long as it's better than your last line chart.
That line chart was professional and damn good-looking. I don't want to...
All right. So we've already covered, we've already covered...
Give us on track, Chairman.
The report of the athletic director, and the total enrollment, the total enrollment is currently 1632. Big chart. And I skipped around apparently. So personnel chart, you have, we do have Caitlin Reardon is a special education teacher in grade three at Quashtown School. She's replaced a teacher who resigned. And at a middle high school, Maureen Goldsmith is executive administrative and guidance. She took a spot that was left by retirement. Beth Nudell is executive student assistant, special ed. She took the position of a course who took another job in another town up towards Boston. And Catherine Cameron has been brought on board as the guidance, middle school guidance administrator assistant. So those are the four different, right, no, the positions. And the letter, we already talked about the grant, and I do want to, I don't know if I put it anywhere else, I'm trying to make sure, I highlight, we did the anti-vaping poster contest, which came to a close, and we received, although I said 165, it's 164, it's because you counted that little one in there, because it was probably... But anyway, 164 entries. First place and $100 went to Quashtown School sixth grader Grace Dionne, her posters are in here. And last night, they were at the monthly drop-in night for the Massachusetts Task Force to receive their recognition. Second place and $50 went to ninth grader Joseph Burton. And third place, $25 went to, yeah, to Dylan Foley, seventh grader. And they were all really good posters. And what we did was hope-numbered them, and then blindly various people narrowed down, we were supposed to arrive at 40 that were going to be displayed more prominently at the drop-in night in addition to the pre-rows. And I also want to make sure everyone knows, we had a great music in our school's district-wide concert on March 13th, to a gymnasium filled with not only family, but also students who are very talented. And, let's see, one more thing here. Oh, some little tidbits about our Southport Falcons. We have 107 Southport Falcons, and 45 percent, 45 percent of them have volunteered or participated directly in school activities. Recently, a group of Southport Falcons participated in a three-day after-school pottery class facilitated by Mrs. Tryana, the art teacher at the high school. And these participants made pottery bowls, and $400 was raised for, on this event for the Southport Scholarship Fund, which benefits our seniors, so. And I know today at the Credit for Life Fair... And I know today at the Credit for Life Fair, there were a couple of Southport Falcons there. The other night at the Mashpee High School's senior exhibition night, several Southport Falcons were there as well, so. We're super happy about that, let me just make sure before I stop and, oh. I don't know if it fits in here, but one was classroom times, I don't know if you saw this on Saturday, it's the Kate Craig times. But we did have some students recognize second place for photography of Jordan Egan, grade six from Quash. This is the picture, that is in.
Yeah.
Third place in photography was Samara Andalib from grade six at Quash. Seventh grader Mahad Ashrab wrote an article, Pakistan visited, Pakistan visit marked by varied dangers, a seventh grader as well. We had a little sort of quote that came from Braden Frazier, grade eight, technology quote. Third place in writing went to Madison Van Huisen for her article, Polar Cave, A Cool Spot for Ice Cream. I think she'll be getting free ice cream.
I was going to say.
The final one was a second place for Eve Mayon for the article she wrote on back on course for ski racing season, this one's going to call.
Too soon.
Yeah, exactly.
And so that one. And two other FYIs, which I'm not going to discuss was, we made, we've already talked about school choice for next year. But as an admin team, we've made a decision that the grades ten to twelve is only going to stay open up through August thirty-first. Because I'm talking with Principal Val Strachey and looking back over some of the school choice students who have come in and then they basically dropped out. And then they're ours, and it's not, it's not good, it's not good, so. We will take anyone who wants to come to us before August thirty-first, if you're looking, grades ten, eleven, twelve. So that's just FYI, we'll put it out there, it will be when the, when school choice application for next year is posted on my, we'll have that previously. Couple other change, or one other change is that, starting on May, not May, April twenty-second, the arrival dismissal process at the Coombe School is changing. We are going back to the buses will be up in the upfront loop. And parent drop-offs will be, drop-offs in the morning will be down in the parking lot area. And any parent picking their child up at the end of the day will have to park and go in to get that child. The, the number of people who are picking their children up has created such a snake of traffic congestion and some safety concerns that it just can't continue. And we had the buses practice on Monday when we had the half-day, they came, they arranged themselves, we worked it out, we fit right. The buses, the second-tier buses, they need to, there was room for them to snake, and parents are just going to have to come. It's not.
Are there going to be signs or anything out there to let parents know once they come in?
Definitely going to have the police to help because we really don't want any cars at the dismissal time of, say, two forty to two fifty-five up. There shouldn't be any cars unless you need a handicap spot coming up to where the buses are going to be. And we're going to communicate it in a hard copy handout that goes home with all the students multiple times between now and Friday before vacation. And then I'm going to communicate it again over vacation as a reminder. And, you know, the morning won't be a big change for parents because they can still pull in like many of you might remember used to pull a light at sidewalks, stuff is there, the kids get out. The biggest change is going to be the dismissal, going back to how it used to be. Because it's just not a well-designed flow and there's not really any way, it's just not good.
When did it used to be that way?
It used to have the buses up at the top, like two years ago.
So I'm just saying, are there, are there, so there's parents there that have never known it to be any other way, so.
Right, you're real helpful. Yeah, it's, it's just so, but I'll be putting something in, starting with tomorrow's email, but we're definitely sending home a hard copy as well.
I completely missed which school this was.
It's the same school.
Come on, see, okay.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do next day calls.
Has there been any subsequent discussion with DPW about reconfiguring the Coombs parking?
I do have a conversation with Catherine tomorrow about several topics. And I know when Quashan got redone, it was because they had excess money in road. I've heard this, so if, I want that to sort of be on, we're waiting to rest if we can ever get. It's, even the entrance, it's just, and we would really like a road widened that goes behind the school, outside the playground. So be on the fence, not coming driving through the playground, around by boys and girls' pubs that could really connect to Quash. Because there's already, there was already for many years a path, pretty wide path in the woods that kids used to walk on. But if that could become a usable way to go between schools, it would be very helpful. Anyway, that's, that's.
Keep it on the radar.
It's, it sounds like. Any other thoughts to swing on?
You got, I, I do have a little change that I'll discuss to be about if the parents pick up. That would be helpful because our parents can, will have to go fully into the building, but we'll be able to do it right from the neighbors.
Always.
So it will alleviate the original problems we had.
Of mingling?
Yes, of, of the building.
Okay.
Mingling, good.
All right, I think that's slightly out of order, I thought it was all about.
Does anybody have anything for Mr. Wolf? All right, thank you, appreciate it. We'll move on to the report of the business manager, Mr. Wolf.
Do you want to take Cameron on this here, though?
Yeah, Cameron's here.
For the tribe.
Oh, absolutely, oh, yeah.
Unless you want to sit through the business manager.
No, no, I, I'll yield, I'll yield to the gentleman.
Actually, yes, we'll defer the business manager, we'll go back to our Cameron. Appreciate it, thank you, Nicole.
Sorry about that.
Not a problem, I'll get my chance.
Hello, everybody, my name's Cameron Greenview, from the Ho-Chung Nation of Wisconsin, and I work for the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. I'm the NYCP manager, some of you might know John Hanlon, who already is working in the schools already. I'm more of the program manager, kind of like behind-the-scenes guy, so I'm in the office a little more. But I really like to get out there and do outreach myself. Me being a full-blood Native American, I know how, the struggles that some of these kids are going through, and I think I can relate to them very well. I, our, our program does have a lot of activities going on right now. Next week, John and I are taking a group to our college visit in New Mexico. We're going to go see IAIA, that's the American Indian Arts School in Santa Fe. And we're also going to see Southwestern Indian Polytech Institute in New Mexico, Albuquerque. And then we're also going to Fort Lewis in Colorado. And we're taking about a group of five students and five chaperones. Some of them have to bring in their parents, some of them are bringing their grandparents. So our numbers are going up a little bit, and in the future, we do have other things going on. We don't have our summer program up yet, but I'm working on that. Unfortunately, personally, I have to go through a lot, my wife is pregnant with five kids. My commitments right now, I, I hope everybody are tentative at the moment, so, and she's doing May, so it's coming up quick, so. So other programs that we have coming on, I am having a three-on-three basketball tournament at the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. And we're going to have a native entrepreneur there. He's well-known throughout Indian country with a clothing line that's connected to, that's geared towards the target audience of Native Americans and also younger, younger, I guess, maybe urban kids. It's, he has a product that's very fantastic, and his story, he also, I don't know if you guys heard about any Native American basketball tournaments? They're held all over the country, people play for money, and they're very popular. And I'm just trying to give, I'm trying to expose the kids to something different outside the Cape. One of you guys' past students, his name is Nico Hendricks, everyone called him Nikia. He's going to high school, high school in Indian Nations University down in Kansas. And I helped him get into that school a couple of years ago. And he was a kid that I knew wasn't doing much around here, but I knew there was potential. So with a little talking, a little motivation, a lot of talking, actually, and a lot of motivation, we got him into school. And he's doing pretty well, I think he graduates this year, and he played on the basketball team, I think he got all-conference. So, and he's well-known throughout Indian country as well for the basketball skills. So our, our program is really trying to expose kids to stuff that's geared in college, otherwise careers. So our ages that we work with are high school age, fourteen to eighteen, and so fourteen goes even in seventh grade, so we take them in too. But we also have internships for our kids, internships that we pay, after fifty hours, we'll give them a stipend of seven hundred and fifty dollars. So that works out to be about fifteen bucks an hour. Those internships are approved by me and John, and they have proper paperwork they have to fill out to do that. And so if they work something out with somebody in the school or something like that, we can help them out with that. You're only allowed two of those a year, so the students, again, this is just for Mashpee Wampanoag students. So, and they only get two a year, and yeah, it's a great program, I think we should all take advantage of that. We also have college visits, which we give a stipend up to nine hundred dollars for families to go see a school for a child. I know how hard it is to go to school here, I just recently graduated myself two years ago, I got my bachelor's degree, I went back to school, back to school. So I think I know the process pretty well, and so for me to pass my knowledge on to the kids is something I think they can utilize. And especially me, when I had kids and went back, it was a little tougher, but, but I did it, so. Yeah, and the other programs we have going on right now, I believe that's it. So we had the basketball tournament, and we have our big college visit, next week we're leaving April eleventh to the sixteenth. May seventeenth again is our big basketball tournament try to have. So yeah, if kids have any questions, any questions, concerns about what they want to do in the future, we really try to gear them towards something and expose them to a lot of things. I think native children and kids need to be exposed to different things. Alls they know, where I come from as well, is most of the kids are just comfortable in their, I don't want to say reservation, because a lot of us didn't have reservations. But in their community, they get comfortable in their small community, and it's really hard for them to try anything new. A lot of them go also, as being minorities in school, they see themselves different. And sometimes kids point that out from a young age, and it's unfortunate that that happens, but that does something to their self-esteem. So I think exposure, exposing exposure, exposure is what is the key here to our, for our, for our program to help these kids. We've had a few things going on, we've visited Harvard, which is crazy to me because I grew up in Wisconsin. In Wisconsin, we say Harvard back home, we laugh about it, because we're like, you're not going to Harvard. You're not going to MIT, we also visited MIT. It's so crazy that now, here I am, taking these kids around, people telling us that you can do this, you can do this, you can do this. And for me, growing up in Wisconsin, that was, that wasn't even close to an option of what we're doing in the future. So this program, I'm very excited about, I'm so glad they gave me the opportunity. We have a lot of stuff going on, hopefully, a lot more in the summertime, more trips. And yeah, stuff to expose the kids to other things outside of the Cape, even though the Cape's beautiful, don't get that wrong. It's better than Wisconsin, they're just getting over snow over there, so. Yeah, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
If you ever need opportunities to come into like the middle high schools to sort of target the population, like you're pretty charismatic and enthusiastic and passionate.
Yep.
And I assume you are getting in to share that sort of energy with the group of kids you're trying to get at, although I know they're very connected to the government center, but.
Yes.
If there's any opportunity you want to get into the middle high school, I think we could figure something out and welcome you because I think you have a strong influence on the kids.
Yes, yeah, that's my goal. Yeah.
Sounds like some great programs, and even on the personal level, it's good to hear all the things that you're doing connecting with kids.
Yeah.
That's obviously very important, and also congratulations on now being able to start your own basketball team.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Five, yeah, all the kids are going to be six and under.
Oh, wow. So we won't be seeing much of you.
Yeah.
So I had a quick question, what does, what did you say NYCP stood for?
NYCP is the Native Youth Community Project. There's also, what John usually goes by as building better pathways for, or building pathways for native youth. So there's a couple of things that's on our grant, but there isn't a specific, and we don't have a logo. So we're in the process of trying to get something together that's catchy and catch the eye of the kids, so.
So help me understand, kids that aren't maybe a member of the Wampanoag Tribe that are native in our schools, do we have? I, I thought we did at one point, but are they?
They, unfortunately, I think our grant just is for, written for Mashpee Wampanoag tribal members.
Okay.
I think, I'll just have to research that one again, because I had to talk with John about that. And we did have a few kids come in that were non-Mashpee, but native.
Right, right.
In the past, so I, I'm still getting settled in in my new position, but something we'll look at. And I don't mind bringing in other natives, speaking of, because my children are enrolled Ho-Chung, so they're not enrolled Mashpee. So that would be something I think we should just bring them all in and connect with them.
Well, if we can help in any way, it's, it's, I always forget about the grant aspect in terms of tribal funding, because I know grants come in from different places and they're pretty explicit.
Yeah.
But anyway, I, if we can help in any way, at least not.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else?
I commend what you're doing, I, I think it's fantastic.
Thank you very much.
You know, exposing the kids to the possibilities of what's out there, that's what every one of us are trying to do. So just keep up and keep going, excellent, thank you.
I will.
Thanks, Cameron.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you for your time. Nice to meet everybody.
Good luck on your trip.
Thank you, thank you.
Feel free to stick around for Paul's report, which is coming up. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll entertain any questions on the budget to actual, but I just want to point out, Mr. Myers pointed out something. If you look at the bottom of page twelve, negative seventy-seven, nine, nine, two, and fifty-two cents, we're starting to get into that three fifty-five now. Now, the way this is going to work out is, the way this was planned, that at the end of the year, we were going to back out what we needed. And I'm going to entertain that later on in my presentation, what we needed to close out the fiscal year. The minus seventy-seven, nine, nine, two is going to change daily because we go in and we, especially over the April vacation when everything's kind of quiet. Darlene and I will go in and we'll start looking at encumbrances and calling vendors and calling people that work in the district, you know, it's like administrative assistants. And find out if we can close some of those out. So that seventy-seven thousand will fluctuate, and then we'll come, you know, it's going to fluctuate each month. It's going to go up, and we're going to, you know, it's going to come down. As far as the purchasing, I have told the principals that it's almost like game over, it's only necessary thing from here on in. Everything should be purchased by this time, you know, we're getting close to the end of the school year. So I will entertain any questions on the budget to actual, but that's our game plan from now until the end of the year.
Anyone?
Then hearing no questions. Moving on to the grants. We have a staff here, I, I, well, hold, go, 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 good, okay, got one?
Yeah, I did.
Good, good.
On page twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
Just, um.
Yeah, just let me get there. I'm old to be there. All right, twenty-one, here we go.
All right, so I believe we added another out of district here in March or February, March, right? Is that accounted for in your encumbrance?
Yes.
Okay.
They sent it right over. And there are some that we're looking to close out too, some of them have changed. It could be someone that went from one out of district to another out of district, but we haven't, I checked with Darlene, we have not closed. I think there's one out there now that we haven't closed out yet.
All right.
But those, those are the things that we look at at the end of the year, because a lot of times, payments have been made or somebody leaves. We do pick up some money in those particular areas.
All right, well, which brings to the other question on that page, which was in regard to McKinney-Vento. regard to McKinney-Vento, that's been running higher the entire year, you're projecting right now, what, maybe thirty-four thousand at this point. If I recall correctly, you had indicated that you thought some of that would be reimbursed by the state, is that correct?
That is correct. That is reimbursed by the state, but it goes back directly to the town.
Okay, so it doesn't help us.
No, it doesn't. And their reasoning with that is, you budgeted, you know, they've given you the money upfront, they get the money coming on the backside.
But that's different than how any subsequent change in chapter seventy works, I thought we got that.
No, we do not get this, not this, not the McKinney-Vento.
Okay.
If there's any change, if there are changes in special ed and regular transportation, that would, it would still go back to the town, that's chapter seventy-one, which would be, they would give it to us upfront, they would take it back when they get the reimbursement.
Okay. All right, so, do you expect that to continue to grow?
With McKinney-Vento?
Yeah.
I'd say yes, we're getting more and more every year, and, you know, you can see that it's a big impact here, just think of what it's like in these big cities, what they're dealing with today.
All right. No, I think he answered my other questions.
All right, what else there, Paul?
Okay, moving on to the grants. Do you have any questions on those, it's basically drawing them down?
Yeah, so I did have a question on title four.
Correct.
How much of that gets earmarked for music?
I saw that, and Title Four Expert just left the room, so.
All right, well.
I'd rather, we can hold that, I can come, we'll come back to that, is that all right?
Yeah, we can come back to that.
Are there any other questions on the grants?
Anyone?
Okay, I'll hold that out. The next one is the revolving accounts. Pretty much gate receipts, the last of the basketball receipts, twenty-three oh-two, lost book accounts, pretty self-explanatory, the preschool account, and that's about it. The other ones are grants. Here she is. There was a question.
Over me, oh, sorry.
No, no, that's all right, that's all right, we're right on schedule. There was a question on Title Four.
Yes, what was that question?
How much of that is earmarked for music programs?
None.
None at all?
No, we were able to flex Title Four funds into Title One, which allowed us to provide additional reading support at the elementary level. That's what we did this year.
Moving, moving on, revolving accounts, the, the next thing that I would, that I want to move to is the school choice projected expenditures, this was something that I believe the working group wanted to, might have been brought up at the last meeting, and I've done some projections here. Let me just walk you through this, it's page thirty-six. As you can see, we started out with a balance of six-hundred-twenty-seven, eight-eight-three-ninety, we had expenditures of forty-five, seven-oh-six, so we had a balance of five-eighty-two, eight-oh-seven, thirty-four. To this date, we have brought in four, thirty-nine, eight-oh-nine. This is what comes into questions, is the one million, twenty-two thousand, six-one-six, thirty-four that is sitting in the car, the town coffers currently. In other words, this, what you hear is, they're sitting on a million dollars. Okay, so let me move forward on that and show you how that, the first thing, the projected, and you notice I have projected FY nineteen, budget offset, is the three-fifty-five, four-eleven. So off that million, you're going to have three-fifty-five, four-eleven, and we would have a current balance of, as March thirty-first, six-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-five dollars and thirty-four cents. Now, in FY, remember, we're always in arrears one year, so then a part of that million is the five-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars, which is going to offset the FY twenty budget, which now brings it down to our current balance of, and this is money that's in the coffers already, already, will leave us with a balance of one-twenty-nine, two-oh-five, thirty-four. I am projecting, based on the choice funds, I am projecting that in FY nineteen, the remaining of FY nineteen, will generate a hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty, six-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars, which will give us a balance after we've offset FY nineteen and FY twenty of two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. And that was the discussion that the working group had, that there would be a quarter of a million dollars, that would be the floor, so that's a pretty good projection.
Yeah, that's good.
To get to, you know, five thousand dollars.
And I appreciate you putting this together so everybody could see what was in our, in our brains of the working group, the whole purpose of this was so that although in the, in units, it says we have a million dollars, we really don't have a million dollars.
We really don't have that, we really don't, and I wanted to show that before that, hits, as they say in the cities, hits the streets. So, so you can see, when all is said and done. Now, the only piece to this is, if you go back up where it says projected FY nineteen budget offset of three-fifty-five, four-eleven.
Right.
We may not use all that money.
Or we could need more of it.
Pardon me?
Do you think we could need more of it?
No.
Okay, so we, likely we would be using less potentially.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to hope that.
Yeah.
I don't have the crystal ball yet, but, you know, we watched that, we've kind of monitored that, and that's what we're monitoring, is that seventy, that negative seventy-seven thousand, that will, we feel that over the April vacation, looking at encumbrances, we'll pick up some money there, and, but, you know, we have a pretty good feeling that it's not, it's not going to be near the three-hundred-and-fifty.
Yeah, great.
But that would be carried forward, and that's a discussion that you people have with the town next year.
Great.
But this year's goal was to get us to the two, the quarter million.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't know, does anyone have any questions? No? Okay, well, we'll see if anybody asks us questions outside of this meeting.
I think it's pretty basic.
I think so. I just don't know how to get this information into the hands of anyone.
I haven't seen the Nielsen ratings yet.
Yeah.
But I think the ten people that may watch.
Negative something.
Josh, you're supposed to be panning, Josh, you're supposed to pan the camera over to Jared.
Laugh track.
Yeah.
All right, and I just have, I just have a transfer, and it's just to take care of the deficits on the line items, and I need a vote on this, and it's nineteen oh-five.
Do we have a motion on the transfer?
Make a motion, we approve transfer nineteen oh-five.
A second.
Motion by Don, second by Nicole.
If I may, so, so for, this is one thing I was going to look at, but I'm glad you brought it up, so the thirty-five-ten line item, the athletic cover.
Yep.
Is there, is there any reason why we just don't use that huge athletic receipts revolving account?
I'm sorry.
Why we don't use the huge athletic receipts account right now, that's up to sixty thousand dollars to offset this?
We use, we will be charging some items to that, but the rule, you know, the law is that you use the appropriation first and then move over into the revolving account.
But the appropriation is minus seventy-seven thousand dollars, so it's used. The appropriation's used, we're minus seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Total, but not the athletic.
It's still minus seventy-seven, you're just transferring money around, right? So you can transfer out of athletics into someplace else, right?
Yeah, but if you look, if you go into the budget to actual, you'll see that, you'll see that the, that the athletics is not out of money in their, in their, in their budget, just like the elementary schools, the high schools, not out of money.
But if they were, you could transfer money out of a different area, non-salary, to cover that.
Yes, I could.
So overall, we're still minus seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Right.
The appropriation is spent over by seventy-seven thousand.
That is correct. But it's not, athletics is not overspent by seventy-seven thousand, the whole budget is overspent by seventy-seven thousand.
I got you.
But if athletics itself...
You're just, you're just throwing numbers around, we're overspent.
Yes, right, and we knew we were going to be overspent.
Right, I'm not, I'm not calling that out, my point is that we're...
We just didn't know when we were going to hit that, so that's where we are.
But if athletics itself, as an entire group line item, was out of money, you could pull from athletic receipts?
You mean the revolving account?
Yes.
No, it's subs, no, it can only be used for athletics.
That's what I mean.
That's what I mean.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's what's going to happen, as soon as they get wiped out, we go right into the revolving account.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But we're building a new ticket, ticket booth, and that's going right into the revolving, that's not coming off the operational budget.
Yeah, yeah, I got you. Thank you very much.
Do I get the vote, did we vote?
We did not, yeah, does anybody else have any questions?
All right, I'm sorry.
All right, Aaron, now, Don?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passed.
Okay. The last piece of my report tonight is the four-year budget plan, from twenty to twenty-three, and I am currently working on twenty-four, so what's, as we get into twenty-four, the next meeting with the working group, nineteen comes off, because we're almost done with nineteen, twenty moves over, and then twenty-four comes on the end. So, this is where we are right now on the four-year plan, we are working, the assistant superintendent, the superintendent, and myself are meeting with principals, and I'll call them budget managers, not only the principals, but athletics, sped, all the budget managers. And we've had our first walkthrough with them, and I pointed out that we're going to have to have another walkthrough, so we're going to be discussing, right now concentrating on the FY twenty-one budget with the, with the three people that I just mentioned, but in the working group, we'll start moving into the twenty-four. Now, when we settle the twenty-one, when we kind of get that and present it to the school committee, that's going to change everything to the right. That's going to change everything.
I got some more, Paul, that's what we get today.
I'm sorry? And we're still, and as people come in and tell us they're retiring, we're still updating that too. So you're going to see that change. That's almost on a daily, well, I usually do it after each payroll, so we did meet this week, and I do have, have that, I do have that information.
Can you just refresh my memory, what's behind the fifteen-point-five percent increase in athletic salaries?
It's contractual, and we added, we added some, didn't we add some sports?
We added sports, but I thought the athletic trainer shifted up there, somewhere along.
Oh, and the salaries, that was one, the athletic trainer, what was moved from a contractual person up to salary. That was one, but I thought we added...
We're working on volleyball.
That was it, yeah, volleyball, we're working on volleyball, not that that's a big impact, so, but basically, what was moved up there is the trainer.
Okay.
Thank you, Adam Superintendent. Yeah, I just, and we were, we, that had come up, and I think that came up today in a discussion or something, so, that was the big item.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Or do you have more, Don?
Go ahead, I do have another question.
So, well, it's kind of a different general direction. Are you, you want to finish?
Okay, well, just, just a comment, I just struggle with twenty-twenty-three in regard to the total operating expenses.
I see that, I see that.
Decreasing basically fifty percent, so I'm just going to express a concern.
Where, what do you mean, what's decreasing fifty percent?
So if I look at the year-over-year change in total expenses, the operating ones.
From when to when, Don?
So, for twenty-twenty-one, they're going up seven-point-one-one percent, twenty-twenty-two, they go up six-point-oh-two percent, and in twenty-twenty-three, they only go up two-point-nine-seven percent.
Yeah, I would, I would request that, you hold on a second, so we can talk about this stuff, I have, the working group hasn't discussed this four-year, this new four-year plan. This is the first time anybody's seen that, seen this, so that's why I wanted to discuss it with, I made a bunch of notes and...
Okay, I guess, I was under the impression...
No, this is, this is the plan that we presented to the working group.
Yeah, but we haven't seen this new one, we haven't talked about it as a working group.
All right, well, regardless, I'm just expressing a concern, I'm not expecting an answer.
No, I agree with you.
So, that's all I want to say. Turn it over to Nicole. You're just somewhere else.
So my question, when you were saying that you're working with the principals and what, did you say hope?
Yeah, I tried.
On the, yeah, on the twenty-one budget. So, you know, I hear occasionally, or I see things in the schools where a teacher says, yeah, we don't have this, or we don't have that, and I don't, I don't feel like I've ever turned down a request for something, and I'm just wondering where those, is there some sort of unspoken rule that a teacher can't, you know, or they have to wait their turn, or is there some priority queue in determining which classrooms get what, or what, is there?
I haven't refused a requisition all year.
Okay.
So the principals own the budget though, and so it really is, they're, they own that fee, so.
I guess that's, since they were two here, I thought maybe they could tell me how...
And just clarification, if there is, you know, if they, if they had budgeted for paper and they want to spend it on textbooks, I don't care, as long as they don't go over the bottom line, it's bottom line for me, just as it is for you people, when you, when we do a budget.
I'll use an example from someone who's not here, so it's not like, I'm not putting anyone on the spot, but like, when I was a science fair judge, we were, I was at the science fair, and a lot of these, a lot of the posters were handwritten and different things like that, and somebody commented, well, we don't have a color printer in the science lab, and I said, why not? Why don't, why don't we have a printer there? And he was, they were like, the only printer we have is in this place, and I thought, well, certainly we can swing another printer, I, and so that's me just asking, like, so if we're going to do a, and it was only the first time we've done this science fair, so maybe it's like a need that hasn't been like established yet, but, you know, we're trying to teach kids how to communicate professionally, and to use, you know, different tools, and use some cutting-edge technology and things like that, and, you know, I'm looking at signs with like handwritten bubble letters on them, and I'm thinking, this is not going to fly at state, you know, so why don't we have a printer for these kids?
So, because the principals have, at the high school, at the middle high school, the department has built their own budgets for their department, so if the science department wanted a color printer... So if the science department wanted a color printer, then they, that, they would put it, and they have it. So it's just, there's, that's the way, like, we don't go back and say.
Well, that's why I'm asking, is there some sort of, like, understanding that, you know, is there some unwritten looking at?
Don't look at me, I'm not even getting.
I mean, I don't know, maybe I need to go talk to some teachers, but I, I, it just seemed like odd, because, like I said, I don't think we would deny a request to have, you know, it didn't seem like that wouldn't have the chance to make it in the budget, and I just wondered whether there's some barrier to, like.
Do you think if, like, Mrs. O'Brien or Mr. O'Bell talked about how they get input from the teachers for the budget, that would help?
Sure.
I have sent out Google Forms, and when I was comparing the FY21 budget, asking teachers for input, what they needed in their classroom, whether it be technology, textbooks, whatever materials they were looking for, and needed the feedback, whether it was teachers' desks, "What do you need?", and then based on what they give me and that information, then I can project what I might need to replace, and that's how that budget would be built.
And I think it's.
It's just very similar, the same way, it's a little difficult projecting out the multiple years that we've had with their budgets, right? So the things that the teachers were concerned with looking that far ahead were the things that might need to be replaced, for example, kindergarten rooms, there's centers and areas that might need to be changed out, so kind of look at, not naming what they are, but the figures, everything, and they're estimating the items that would have to replace.
You have to wonder if you're gonna get a request for a color printer to own it, in middle school, so, yeah, for 20.
But the, also, there is a.
If you don't, I'm disappointed.
That you just said, rotation or a sort of schedule, or a view schedule for curriculum material. So like, the high school social studies needed, needs to get their textbooks next year because the standards change, so that means math maybe isn't getting them next year, but that's probably the extent of the.
But I guess where I'm going with all this is that I'm thinking about our choice funds and the opportunities we have to pilot new things, to allow teachers to innovate, try new stuff, you know, think about ways to keep kids in classrooms that allow them to move and still be in a classroom, you know, sort of like the bikes and stuff that we've done in the library. I've already heard a couple of parents saying, "Wow, I wish we could have that in the homeroom," you know, different, and, and so I'm just thinking, you know, because we have to plan the budget so far in advance, it seems like choice funds might be an opportunity for things that maybe teachers didn't anticipate, or come across, or even know to want at the time they're making the request to you, and I'd like to strategize at some point as to how we can create that as a, as a, like a pilot program, or something that we could do to earmark some choice funds for that type of opportunity, I guess.
And that is one of the things that we share a question at seven different teacher teams. I hope they were awarded, but they've had five mini grants for some of those special initiatives that weren't necessarily budgeted, but we can also offset that cost, so I can play with some money in the budget to shift, if we cut back on paper, this is what we can do. One of the examples here was scholastic news, when teachers were told the cost of scholastic news, and they understood that expense, it really changed how many we ordered. It was cut in half, because some of the teachers thought, "Oh, yeah, I'll use it," but not regularly, where other teachers do use it as an institutional resource. But it really went from approximately $6,000 budget item down to about $2,500, because teachers understood, so sharing the budget expense with them, they can prioritize what they want in the classroom, and that helps me build a budget that's meeting their needs and what they want in the classroom. But it involves the teachers, I think, and we do that.
I mean, the irony is, in the past, school choice was that revenue source that provided, you know, the opportunity to buy iPads, to buy computers, to buy stuff that didn't come through the normal operating budget, and now.
Camp Falcon, we piloted Camp Falcon.
Right, Camp, Camp Falcon helped support the startup of the preschool program, et cetera. Now that we're in a different environment, where we're basically using almost all of that on an annual basis to support the, the operating budget, and we don't have as much flexibility anymore to do that, and, and so I, I think, to your point, Nicole, we're gonna have to strategize more in advance to be able to identify those opportunities and be able to prioritize them for the ones that we want to, be able to invest what we have left.
And I think the finance working group discussing this, I mean, I could see that you could set aside, you know, it doesn't seem like a lot for $20,000 a year on school choice, and set up a program like this, or teachers could sort of, "I'm requesting this, and this is why," and they would have to have a dollar amount, and it's almost like we would be giving our own little mini grants from within the system, or maybe the science department does come forward, and they're supposed to say, "We're requesting this, they've given a price, or talked to you, would you give the best deal?", and that becomes something that we say, "Yes, we could do that."
Yeah, that's, that's exactly, that's exactly what I was thinking.
And that, that could happen in the near future, because I don't think.
Yeah, so I think that the, so one of the classic examples I saw at the conference last weekend was a school on Lion Island that had developed an outdoor learning center. I was telling Paul about it this week, but they had a, a different situation in that there were some buildings that weren't being used by their municipality or whatever, and they were able to repurpose some of those buildings. But even in talking about that learning center and the opportunities it provided for, they started out with K through 2, pretty soon, bigger grades, it's now in its fourth year, it's like whole grades are, you know, passing through that as part of their curriculum. But they were saying, even because they have a greenhouse there, they're using the vegetables they grow in their kitchens, and the culinary programs and all that stuff, and he said, "As robust as the greenhouse is," that was a part of this learning center, it was one that they had repurposed, "That the small greenhouse that their teachers had purchased, like à la carte, and put in one of their courtyards in their school, was one of the best, was one of the best components of this program for a lot of reasons. One, you had to have some teachers who were very excited about doing this." Was that Si directed it?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, good. I realize I'm going on, but just, and anyway, this greenhouse was like this really. It was like this really robust mini greenhouse, and because it was in the courtyard in the school, you didn't have to transit students and do all this extra, but the kids were getting outside, even though they were still in the confines of the school, and I just thought, "We have courtyards," you know, "We can, we could do something like that in Mashpee," and so. Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, in the court, yeah, exactly.
Can, can I suggest that? Can I suggest that we have, we ask the task force to take a look at that and then bring this back at a subsequent meeting for further discussion?
Working group.
But that wasn't along the order of what I was thinking, you know, 20 grand, 25, something that.
And if we're comfortable with that money just being encumbered out of our floor, then there's not much to talk about, you know, we just talk about it every year and see how we're looking.
Right, I would, I would wait until, you know, as we get into May.
I'm picking up what you're putting down, Paul.
Okay.
Which is fine, too, but one key point I think we're a little bit missing, too, and she touched on it with the printer, is we need to ask.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So if they're not asking, you know.
But that's why it's neat to have that, setting up a system for these little.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, but still.
Things that just pop in your head because you're in the middle of it, and you're like, "Oh, my God, I wish I had a printer."
At a conference we were at in February, they also, there was a school that had these mini grants that were $100 for students, too, and the students would apply, and they would get $100 to do whatever, and the stuff that they did was insane, it was incredible, $100. So I would love the working group to consider both students and staff opportunities.
Can't wait to hear what they have to say.
Trying to move you along, man?
Yeah. Trying, trying to.
Doing a great job.
Trying to keep Chris on.
Eleven months I haven't had to use a scalpel.
Still got another month to go.
All right, one more month. All right, we're good, is that it for, Mr. Pump?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, appreciate it. All right, excellent agenda, we're gonna move on to Skylar Rempel, hear what she has to say. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, good evening, everybody.
Wait, you first have to tell us why you're in crutches.
I sprained my ankle.
Doing what?
Softwood.
Oh, bummer.
At least it wasn't skiing.
Oh, no, last Monday.
So how long are you on crutches for?
Um, hopefully, the end of this week would be the last.
Well, if you have to transition to a cane, I have a couple of them. It's the only reason I mention it.
Okay, so.
Let him down, Paul. Let him down over here.
I'll pick him up.
All right, floor's all yours, Skylar.
Okay, so over the weekend, the baseball and softball programs both held what they call Falcon Fest, which was a tournament in which towns on and off Cape brought their varsity teams to compete. So it was a great weekend of softball, baseball fundraising, and team bonding for each program, and we're all very thankful for the support of the families, the coaches, and the players who volunteered their time. The Southport Falcons had a three-day pottery class after school last week to make bowls out of clay to their design and to their liking with Miss T, and they are having their own soup for the soul at Southport, and all of the money raised will go to the Southport Scholarship Fund for MHS seniors. On Monday, April 1st, was senior exhibition night, so projects and presentations that the seniors have been working on all school year, ranging from senior seminar students who did community service projects, such as soccer and basketball games, as well as drives and collections, and school-to-career students who had to do 100 hours of internship from December to May, and had to contribute something to their new workspace. All projects explained their journey to success, and it was a great reflectory night to see how far the seniors have come. Mr. Report's eighth-grade entrepreneurship class worked on their quarter-three presentations on a project in which they're given a company, and they have to make a new product for it and present it in a way similar to Shark Tank. And in his engineering-the-future classes, the eighth-grade students also had to work on arcade games, and they made projects such as mini golf and table hockey. In Mr. Rumberger's eighth-grade Spanish class and a period of Mrs. Reynolds' AP Human Geography classes, we Skyped one of Mr. Rumberger's friends, who lives in the Colombian Venezuelan area, to hear about his journalism journey and helping students get an authentic perspective on the real-world problems occurring there, and asking questions in Spanish for the students who take Spanish. Senior Julia Leets hosted a college fair at MMHS for students with representatives from over 40 colleges, US military travel programs, and the Wampanoag Tribe. So it was a great exposure to colleges for some students that they had not heard of yet, and discovering what kind of qualities they look for in a college. The MMHS Honor Roll Recognition Breakfast for students 7 through 12, who earned a B+ or higher in all of their classes in quarter two, was a couple weeks ago, and they all received a certificate and a breakfast with their other friends who earned honor roll. And it's really important to do this because it encourages students to get honor roll, and it makes all of their hard work feel appreciated. Class registration was a small but important topic of conversation last week, and with so many options, it was very difficult to choose, from ones that are more art and music-based to some that are athletic-based, and some that are curriculum-based. The students are incredibly grateful for all the teachers who make these options available to us, and helping us prepare for our future careers by classes we get to take, not have to. Eighth grader Katrina Mayan and myself hosted Spring Service, the annual Project 351 Clothing Drive, which is the largest youth-led service project in the nation, which is a very exciting statistic. So Katrina and I will be getting together on Friday to sort through the clothes and donate them this weekend. It has been really fun for me to mentor her so far, and I'm excited for the years to come. On a similar note to that, on March 23rd, a wonderful combination of ambassadors, alumni, educators, including Miss Melby, who came, 'cause she is one of the major representatives of Project 351, only Miss Hope Hanscom for Mashpee, and Carolyn Casey also attended, who is the founder of Project 351. We hosted a spring service training for the ambassadors, so that they knew how to do a quality sort, and how to make posters, and how to spread the word. It was a very humbling experience, as well as a great exposure in how to ask for donations from restaurants, and how to host events, and making sure the eighth graders had what they need. The regular season has kicked off for spring sports, with all of the teams either having games already or preparing for their first. Coaches and players are working hard to qualify for a tournament spot and building up the younger sides of their programs. Brett Pelz's senior project was a basketball game last week, which was a 3v3 tournament in basketball that included players of various ages and outside of Mashpee as well, so multiple towns included. It was a huge success for Children's Cove, which is on Cape and a home for abused children, and he raised $1,549 from that. The Health Occupations Students of America, also known as HOSA, had a field trip to Worcester State University last weekend, in which Jordan Willis, Matthew Fish, Eduardo Zanoni placed second, and Olivia Olivera placed first in their entries, whether they were persuasive writing and speaking, healthcare displays, and interview skill applications into the state-level contest. I have these to pass out for you guys.
Thank you.
For the International Technology and Engineering Educators Association awarded Mashpee's Technology Center at MMHS, the Program Excellence Award winners of Massachusetts. It was a very honorable accomplishment for Miss Amanda Howe, Mr. Michael Looney, Mr. Anthony Cupy, and Mr. Salvatore Nocello. The National Honor Society had their induction, and they inducted 28 students from grades 10, 11, and 12, who show excellence in and out of the classroom through leadership, service, character, and their honorable academic standings. The seventh and eighth grade students had their annual semi-formal dance, with a winter wonderland theme hosted by the middle school student government and their advisors, Miss Desley and Miss Campbell. The club's planning, advertising, and cooperation together resulted in a very fun night for the middle school students. The robotics team competed in the Southern New England Championships on March 16th and 17th at Worcester State University. Mashpee has had countless qualifications and matches over the school year, and it was a fantastic growth in the program, from having one team of four people to over three teams with more than four on each, and for also getting more growth in the engineering field. The Cape Cod All-Star Basketball Game was played on March 17th, which had Ashley Kelleher, Amaya Peters, and Devon Ford representing Mashpee High School on the Upper Cape team. These three players are always working hard on the court and making Mashpee proud. Ashley Kelleher also represented Mashpee Middle High School at the Regional Science Fair on March 16th with her display on how she increased the purple martin bird species on Cape Cod, and received an honorable mention by the judges. The art classes, so at the high school students, including Sarah McNamara, Xavier Jones, Robbie Foster, and other students from the tech and engineering classes, engaged with Miss Palmer's first-grade art classes to make mini golf courses, which was a great interschool connection and for high school students to give back. The annual Spring National Honor Society Cape Cod Healthcare Blood Drive will be held this Friday at MMHS, so many students signed up to give, as well as people in the community, and all the donations for the Cape Cod community by donating. The Credit for Life Fair was held today, senior project of Cori Andrade and Devon Ford, which is a nationally-recognized program, and it helps students develop financial management skills. Over 50 community members were there today to help. Prom tickets go on sale next week, which will be Friday, May 3rd, and held at the Pop and Esset Inn. Term three ends on Monday, April 8th already, so we're going into the last quarter of our academic school year. Students Madison Egan, who's a senior, and Anna O'Neil, who is a junior, on Friday will be representing Mashpee at Student Government Day at the State House, which these students will review in both the House and the Senate, different bills that impact students, one, an Act for Non-Organized Head Impacts to School Children, and another influencing tobacco products. One, an act for non-organized head impacts to schoolchildren, and another, um, influencing tobacco products. And students Sarah McNamara, Tess Hatchey, and Noah Tellez represent Mashpee Middle High School at the State Student Advisory Board, which is held at East Bridgewater High School. And the students are writing on anti-vaping and recovery presentations that will be sent out to guidance departments at schools across the state. Thank you. Most of it. Ms. Vaughn finished the rest for me.
That's very good work.
Thank you.
Congratulations on a state nomination as well.
Thank you.
Skylar, do you know what they're charging for prom tickets?
Um, it's, it's up there. I think it's around, I don't wanna say the wrong number, but I think it's around the sixty area, the sixty, eighty area. I don't know for sure.
So, last year, we had this problem because they made the price really, really inexpensive. And then, on the very last day, a bunch of people tried to get them and couldn't get them, and then Mark had to, wasn't that the prom?
That was Homecoming.
Homecoming, okay.
They ran out of tickets.
All right. Never mind. Yeah, yeah, okay, never mind.
I'm pretty sure I did not. No, that's not what I was saying.
He had a lottery.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's only four people in the school, so, all right, well, thank you.
Thanks, Skylar, that was great.
Thank you.
Okay, next we're gonna move on to subsequently-assigned unfinished business. Uh, we have the FY twenty-one school calendar, and that will require a vote.
When a voter, Mr. Chair, uh, this was postponed until the entire committee was available to vote on.
And George is not with us tonight, so, uh, we have a motion to postpone this.
You don't have to do it.
No?
No.
We do not, no?
It's postponed until.
It's already been postponed.
Okay, fantastic. You'll have to last meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right, good.
Can I ask a question, though? The early release in November on the sixteenth? What, is that a professional involvement?
The two conference days are on October twenty-second, twenty-seventh.
Good.
Yep.
Next is, uh, school custodian staff. And, uh, I'm sure it probably won't be an update, huh?
I didn't ask for this. Uh, do you know?
I know at one point you just.
I did, I did before, but I haven't, I haven't asked for it. We had an update.
Did you cross that off?
No.
Well, I just go on record to say that we are very pleased with the current custodian staff, particularly the day staff of all the schools, and are very glad that, um, under the.
Great. That's nice. Well, that was on the agenda.
Move right along to the working group updates.
So, we talked about some financial stuff already, uh, for the working group. And I wasn't trying to call out Paul, the, um, the point I was trying to make is that we, what we did discuss during the working group is that we need to update our assumptions, um, for the four-year plan and re-go through those. And some of the stuff we talked about was, um, a running curriculum, uh, assumption, uh, what are you, what the new year-over-year increase is gonna be for expenses. Uh, we had originally said it was gonna be one point, one point five percent, uh, which is not, uh, it's just not a realistic number, so we're gonna discuss that. We're also gonna talk about any strategic personnel additions. I know there's been some discussions about starting a drama department and things like that. Uh, things that we really need to have a good discussion about and then build in the money into the five-year plan. That's not in that plan you saw. Um, so that's, you know, then my next point was that we were gonna talk about updating the four-year plan. Also, updating the format of the School Choice Fund, which you guys just saw. Setting up a ceiling or discussing a ceiling for the revolving accounts, we had a brief discussion about that. That we have revolving accounts with sixty thousand dollars in them. And I'm telling you right now, that's just the perfect way for us to get called out for having too much money sitting in the, in the coffers. So, we're gonna have a discussion about that, um, in the future and bring it to the committee for a discussion about that. If anybody has any ideas, please let us know. One particular was the Athletic Gate receipts, which is why I was bringing that up about bringing it down by four grand by offsetting Athletic Other. And then I wrote down that we'll, um, we'll take the mini grant program within the School Choice Funds to the next working group meeting, which we don't have scheduled at this time. I'm, I'm trying to think if there's anything that we discussed that we didn't agree with. I don't believe there was. I think we had a pretty, pretty quick and collaborative meeting. You guys think of anything else? Yeah, again, the meeting, and it's, I mean, it's nice, too, 'cause the, you know, the budget's fair, I mean, I know we used to have to go to town meeting, but the budget, the budget discussion's over now. We can really delve into the stuff that we were doing before, which is the four-year plan and some of the nuts and bolts of the way we wanna do our finances.
And I do think on the four-year plan that Paul has a misstep, that FY twenty-one has not been bended professionally, so.
Yeah.
It's the first go-through, and these areas are very high that are not the remaining.
Yeah, and I, I don't wanna, again, I don't wanna call up Paul, it's just we, that needs to be fleshed out. But, I mean, the next time you see it, it will be fleshed out with our recommendations for a four-year plan that you guys can say yay or nay on.
Mr. Chairman, this is a working document. I mean, we, we, you know, we're, we're taking people out, out that are retiring and putting in lower salaries and so forth, uh, so.
Well, I think that's, I think that's great. Uh, you know, uh, those of us, and I think if you weren't at the FINCOM hearing, you probably heard that Chris Avis had asked whether we had any kind of projections in terms of the school, school district budget. And, um, and so, here we are, page thirty-eight of our packet. We have a document labeled four-year budget plan. So, if this is, uh, draft, it needs to have draft plastered all over it because, uh, to the uninitiated, they might think that this is our, and these numbers are gonna move all kinds of places. So, let's just make sure that, I, I, I think it should be in the packet, and I'm fine with that, but let's just label it appropriately next time.
Yeah, I, I would totally agree with that because, um, someone could clearly misinterpret.
Yeah.
That information. So, it should always be, should always be labeled draft unless this committee has.
I'm a big fan of the watermark, because then it can never get cut off, anything, but that's hard to do in Excel, so, um.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, I know.
All right. We could do it. It sounds off. Stay on Google.
Does anybody have any questions for Jeff or anything about the, uh, finance working group?
Yeah, that's all I got.
All right, so, the next one, effectiveness and efficiency, uh, we have had a hard time mailing down a date due to the national conference and then with the tax season. So, I know, is today, uh, George and I have both responded, and we will have the next meeting on April twenty-third. Unless, did you have anything else to add?
Just add that the, um, school committee handbook, has everybody, people made edits, there's some edits that those two didn't get from you, so that's where we'll have.
To what? To effective and effe, and to the commit, you know, it's not my working group.
No, but you have comments about the handbook.
Oh, yeah. Well, right now.
To them.
Yeah.
But not now.
You can email them to me so that we can.
Yep, there you go.
Well, I mean, I brought them, we, when we had them in front of the group, the committee last time.
Have you brought them up already then?
Yeah. And I'll make it, I'll make edits if you want to, or do you want them in email form?
He has some great ideas about streamlining it.
I got you.
That I'm very supportive of, and so.
I will, I will get an email out to you guys before the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Just for your FY.
I guess that's what I was saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Let them, so that they can consider it at that meeting, and then we can get it done.
Appreciate it. All right, and, uh, we'll move on to the next one, data-driven stakeholder communication.
So, I kinda forgot my notes from that meeting. Didn't bring them with me.
Well, so, I think we're, um, Nicole drafted sort of a procedural document for surveys beyond that, so that anybody can pick it up and say, this is how we did the Mashpee Public Schools Family Opinion Survey. That's sort of getting tweaked based on the conversation we had, and then the actual survey data is going to evolve. Sheet you were setting up or something?
Oh, yeah, I've got it. I'm just formatting the database to put this year's data.
Do you have, according to, was it a hundred sixty-five page or surveys?
I thought we were, yeah, we were up over a hundred and fifty, so we got more than twice as many as last year. And so, merging it just requires a database that's.
And you're, we're over fifty percent response rate, huh?
Uh, I think we will be. We definitely got about a hundred more than last year, so.
Yeah, that's a very good response.
And what did we just, did we say that if you were in pre-K, you got it? I asked that question, and I, so if you were a pre-K family, don't have kids in the system except in pre-K, are they considered a district family for the purposes of the survey?
I think they are, but I, I just think so, I'm looking at it again, probably had us learn the options you could put for grade level.
I don't think it was, but that's why I was confused, yeah. But, numbers-wise, well, I don't know. I heard something like a thousand three households we invited, and we've got about thirty-nine kids in pre-K. And, uh, last year, we had just over a thousand families, like a thousand thirty, something like that, so.
And we also, I believe we talked about trying to build a template with permissions and restrictions into survey might be right, so. 'Cause we had some concerns with if you said no to this question, that you could inadvertently skip a section or something like that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we kinda talked about that, but there are some trade-offs to putting restrictions in the survey. Sometimes can discourage people from, if they get frustrated, they might just bail. And so, we don't have any required questions in the survey right now, so people, so some of the skip logic is, is, you have to read through to, to do it properly.
Second, do you have a, do you have a student in Mashpee Middle High School, and you say no, there's no skip logic?
They can start.
You could turn around and answer those questions for Mashpee Middle High School, which is not good data.
Yeah, but that's okay, 'cause I'm throwing all that out. If, if those mistakes happen, we're, we're dealing with that and processing, but it just complicates things.
Gotcha.
Um, the other thing that we talked about at the outreach meeting was, um, how we can have a more kind of robust communications, I guess, not program, but just other opportunities to engage the public and, um, Christina, our, we are Mashpee employee. Yeah, outreach coordinator, she was at, um, the Fortuna Graduate Meeting this week. And she's young and, you know, tuned in to all the social media stuff, and I thought it might be useful to have her, maybe at our next working group meeting, maybe invite her, um, to help brainstorm some new ideas. And then, the other thing, just knowing that we're coming into sort of the busy season, I thought what worked well, just I kind of lost the ability to, to deal with it, was putting, um, potential district-wide events that we should all think about attending on a, on a spreadsheet. We were using like a Google Sheet, and we were able to, um, indicate when, which ones we could attend, which ones we couldn't. And that way, we knew that, um, certain, that we had coverage of different things. Like, I was really glad to hear that Jeff was at the, the performance, you know, the spelling bee performance. I mean, then. And so, you know, I was just glad that the school committee was represented, because I could not get there that weekend. But there are other things that, you, you know, so we just need to do. If, if we're making an effort to be out in the community more, we need to identify those events and prioritize them on, on our calendars, because otherwise, time's just gonna fly by. Was there anything else we talked about?
I thought we did. I, I honestly can't remember. I know most of it was, was survey stuff, yes.
Okay. Yeah, well, that was kind of the next thing, the two-B. We talked about the implementation plan and, um.
Good segue, if you wanna move right into that.
Yeah. So, the, we were, um, we were talking about how this was gonna get distributed, how this information was gonna get distributed, and then we were gonna confirm about, um, yeah, it looks like you made some of the changes about, like, the tribal government center being an option for Native American students. Yeah.
And those were mailed home to play. So, um, I think every, you know, every household, if you were just a household, you're a senior. Kind of that and the rest of it.
And we, we talked about building an FAQ, right, on the website for this, with more detailed info?
There, there's a lot of detail, a lot of detail on the website, sort of slides that scroll down the page. And also, the website, just as an FYI, did get an adjustment based on some feedback. So, now, when you click on the tabs across the top, if you click on School Committee, you get a, a dropdown of every one of the categories. It used to show up as kind of this weirdly organized page, and it goes right to that. So, if you click on, if you go to that or wherever, we have that. The school start time information is in multiple places. It's under the Parents tab, it's under the School Committee as well, so you'll see it a little bit better.
Um, but on that vein, we did talk about seeing if we could get, um, permission with registrations for the incoming school year, the way they do with athletics now, about being able to text families, like, you can give, you can check a box, and I, I'm becoming more and more concerned, based on stuff I'm seeing on Facebook and just hearing from parents that we used in the focus group, that email is like going the way of the rotary phone. I mean, people are so inundated with emails that, you know, they're not often reading yours. And, and it's probably because it's getting lost in, you know, the litany that they must get. And I had a couple people say, oh, I, I would've responded if I had gotten a text. So, I think we should see if other districts do that.
Did you happen to, I know it's coming up later, but did you, did anybody happen to go to that booth with the app at their conference?
Yeah, sir.
I didn't.
I did, and I got some information, and I love it. But, anyway.
Oh. So, we could have a school app. That would be great.
So, we've done the, do you want me to?
Yeah.
We've done the research, uh, like, Suzie Brooks, one of our doctors in technology, uh, researched three or four different apps and gave, uh, robust kind of analysis of it. So, we do have that, and we've shared it. I'm just, um, not sure what the next step will be in terms of making a decision, but that's been on our list for quite a while.
Yeah, Spokenum, too, is pretty.
It's a push.
It's a good guy.
You push.
Because once you get an app.
Twitter, Facebook.
Oh, no, 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 this one.
Everything through one app.
This app, and, and I can wait, but this app specifically was for the school.
No, it is that, too.
Like, it doesn't tie into Facebook.
Oh, see, I like the one that ties to everything.
You download it and you put all your documents up on it, you put your sports schedule on there, but it, and then if you have something going on in the school, you can send a push notification out to all the parents.
It's the same thing.
Didn't interact with Facebook.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, I should've said, yes, that's all happens, and you can link your social media to it. So, it's all supposed to this. That's what I was saying.
You mean the schools?
Yes, yes, not my personal.
We could talk more about it offline, too. I, I just really liked that idea.
Yeah, I know.
I've been looking for that for years.
So, do you want me to share with you her, like, stuff, too? 'Cause I have it all, and it's all linked and stuff, so I will email that to you as well.
I think that would be, if, if you don't object, could we, could we talk about that in the outreach working group?
Oh, of course.
Okay.
So, why don't I, I'll just send it to the committee, so you can all see Suzie's research, and then share, if you don't mind.
Yeah, and then all the stuff that I got from the vendor, too, I'll somehow get it to the committee, in case it's not the same company, you can look at that or whatever you want.
That's what I mean. I, I'd love to see what you guys do.
Okay. Anything, did you have any other questions on that for us? That working group?
I will share, um, subsequently, some of the information that I retrieved or gathered from the National School Board Conference, particularly in regard to communication to parents and to the public. There's some very sophisticated, um, schools out there that are doing lots of, uh, great things, and if we could even do one small piece of what they're doing, um.
Yeah, I, I couldn't find those. I mean, I'm glad you went to them. We, we kind of tried to divide up and conquer, but I thought, I went to one that was talking about inclusion in families and students, and it was about, like, inclusion in the classroom, and I was like, deek, you know. By that time, I'd walked all the way over to the other end, and the cane was not with me, so.
Large place.
Yeah, it's quite large.
So, are we all set with, uh, the goal to be, the communication?
Yeah.
Well, in that case, we'll move on to new business, and first item is the Mashpee Middle High School. All right. Well, in that case, we'll move on to new business and first item is the Mashpee Middle High School band trip to Cannibale Lake Park. And that will require a vote.
This is, what's in your paper that wasn't watched either?
Yeah, it says this is approved by us already, I remember.
Yeah.
Kind of remember us approving, but it might have been last year, I don't remember because everything blends together.
Yeah, it's got the date of the trip, it's May twenty-fifth.
I already signed it, everyone has signed it, they did, and I have that note on.
Yeah, May twenty-fifth.
Is there a note that goes with it? Well, this.
It's already been approved, so.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you, everyone.
Now, did you clip this next one?
Yes, I did. This is me.
It's uh, one fifty-one Old Barnstable Road in the section.
Settle in, Don.
No, I'm not gonna say anything. I have nothing to say, I just wanted to bring it up that, you know, I haven't had the, the experience in the last, you know, or however many years it was until I went to the high school about how terrible that intersection is. And it's, when I say terrible, it's unsafe and there's people that are driving unsafely and passing twelve cars in a line to get across to the school intersection. And I would like to request through the chair to the rest of the committee that I want, I want to write an official letter from the school committee that the town needs to take action on that inter, that, I know that they're working on it at the state level, but there's gotta be stuff that we can do on the Barnstable side to help out Old Barnstable roadside.
Well, so it is already a scheduled project in twenty twenty that includes turning lanes at both directions. Sidewalk, the sidewalk on Old Barnstable side is a state project and a town project, so.
Well, I know that the town of Mashpee can control those signals if they have a cop out there and we could put a cop there during, during, before school and during the, you know, picking up kids.
So maybe the timing of the lights.
I mean, something, I just think, I mean, it's, it's.
We have tried, we will.
I know, I mean, yeah.
I'll bring that up tomorrow.
I'm the same, but if, if we can get a, a letter at least asking that we would like to make this a priority because I, I've been there multiple times and it's just not a safe intersection.
Is there any other idea you mentioned a few things back, I really liked when you make the left lane a left turn only and the right lane a straight, all right.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, again, the problem is that this, one fifty-one is a state route and it's gotta be done by the state and those, if you mess with the timing on one fifty-one, or Old Barnstable, you mess with the timing on one fifty-one. I know we don't have the power to do that, but, as far as I understand.
If you think it would be effective, I would be supportive for us to write some, craft some correspondence to that effect.
I mean, we would have to do a letter, but I'd like to say at least that, unless I'm the only person that's concerned, but I, I.
Do you have to pull up to a certain line to make it trigger because after leaving the senior exhibition night on Monday night, I had never sat, so there was nothing and it never changed from that.
Yeah.
Unlike someone on that other, and there was a guy waiting to, like, I think that's not triggering it so long.
I've been there too.
The buses are crazy. We talked about the possibility of buses exiting more near the sign, you know, when there's a gate there that gets moved over for the picnic. Particularly any bus that needed to go out and avoid the whole light, they could just go towards the commons if that was their route. And that didn't seem like a hard road to make, but I know the whole project, that's not gonna happen. So if it would be, I'll ask for anything to change because I'm sure we won't see a positive improvement or at least.
Oh, yeah.
So if I understand correctly, your, your main concern is when you're on one fifty-one, the fact that the timing on the lights, to try to make a left turn?
No, if you're sitting on Old Bar, if you're sitting on Old Barnstable, either way, and you're sitting in the left lane, that left lane is straight and turn left.
Yes.
So you're waiting for every left turner to go through that light. And what happens is that people who are always in a bigger, better hurry than you are, will come from behind you, get into the right lane and zoom across twelve cars across the intersection to get to the high school. And it's not just kids, trust me. The biggest offenders are the parents. And, you know, we're, they're being put in that situation because they have places to be and I have sat at that intersection behind ten cars for, no exaggeration, fifteen minutes to get over because the five people in front of me are trying to turn left and they can't turn left because people are going straight and the light stops, so.
No, I, I don't disagree with that. I also know the issue of if you're on one fifty-one and you can be sitting there for days if the light doesn't get triggered to try to make that left-hand turn. So, you know, personally, I don't, if I need to go to the high school, I go Old Barnstable Road because I know that light will change.
I never, and I know, when I leave the high school, I never go across one fifty-one, I always turn right. It's just, it's just, it's not, it's not set up correctly and it's.
I know for me going to school, each day I come from the way that you pass the library and then you have to take the left to get into the school. And especially, like, no exaggeration, every day, there'll be, you can see the six cars in front of you and you see the light go green and you're still sitting at a green light because it takes everyone so long to figure out where to go. So that it could be seven twenty-five on a Monday and you'll be on time to school, but it's seven twenty-five on a Wednesday and you're not on time to school because the differences in the light change. And even, the light will be green for five seconds and you can really only get a car or two in in that five seconds. And then that causes people to wanna speed past that, which is really dangerous, especially for the students who are starting to drive. And with all the times, amount of times you're late, then you get an office detention affecting your sports and affecting your after-school clubs, that's really difficult too. And I know for my friends who come from the way that's going straight into the high school down by like the condos, the Quasimodo Valley, they face the same problem because everyone's trying to rush from the left, that if you're trying to take that left thing, they can't go straight. So I think, I do like the idea of having a cop there. My dad and I talk about that from around seven to seven thirty. I think that would be a good idea or just really, I know I've heard the thing with the sensor too, so it's not, it's not that.
There's no sensor. It's like the push to walk by New York City. Yeah, they don't, they're not hooked up.
But, yeah.
You should have made Skylet's your meeting with.
I was gonna say, that should be your.
Yeah, exactly.
But yeah, I agree from a student perspective that something should happen to those lights.
I would predict that those lights greatly contribute to our tardiness.
Absolutely.
All right.
Do you need to go, Chris?
Sure.
You don't have to, but we don't wanna, so I want us to constantly your pressure.
I'm in charge of the. Pressure.
Nice.
I knock them all out.
Thank you.
All right, well, uh, part of the superintendent's evaluation process and timeline, oh, Don, Don had actually mentioned this to me at the, the conference, I completely just based on.
So we, we were just, well, intentionally scheduling, I just wanna share with this folder. So, that's a teaching point, and if you need any help, it's usually nice to set up. This sheet is just sort of a timeline summary. It doesn't include the fact that maybe this, you decide to eliminate the twenty-fourth meeting. One of the things that I learned at the NASF, NASC, and I was actually part of a panel piece that did this workshop with Dorky Presser, that you're not supposed to merge all of your scores to come up with an average. You're supposed to make their combined, you meet and then in your discussion, you merge and say, okay, I could go with the, that rating, you're not supposed to attribute.
Is that, is that recommended or is that something that's?
It, according to NASD and she was really quite an expert at it, she just said, although they do, that is not the recommended.
Recommended.
So say you decide on, so two of you set a proficient in a category, two of you said an improvement. Just to average those scores and land somewhere, you have to convince each other and one way or the other based on what your easily here.
So that's done in public meeting though, right?
Well, so what I had in here, if you see sort of the layout of in early April, this is what happens. One week prior to the May school committee, you're all doing your teach point pieces. And then what I was saying is that, that in the school committee executive session, that would be prior to the school committee meeting in May, maybe you would sort of then decide what your merged ratings were. And then that first school committee meeting is the public evaluation. So if, if it was the May, I don't know if it's May, April, whatever, if you had an exact, ahead of time because you could, he would have looked at all of your individual evaluations and then he would have come up with sort of that consolidated one that then you would look at. I don't know if you have enough time or if you mostly merged and you picked the same ratings in the category.
So I'm guessing by the fact that you brought it up, you haven't even hear that, because it's recommended. But you would prefer that it's not a average, that you would prefer.
Well, no, I want you to do what they consider to be the right way to do it. So I think, you know, oftentimes when you do other things, you don't get to just average, you end up having to convince the other person or one of your faculty. And so I don't know if that creates more work. And hope that you're not widely different in ratings.
Yeah.
So to Don's point, and, and just one of, what else is in this folder? This is an updated summary with action steps and sort of feedback. And then there's self-assessment that I've created in here as well. And so John's point about sort of my reporting out, going to the one meeting a month is tight. So whether you wanted to do something on April twenty-fourth, that would be my, um, public, you know, reporting out of my class. That's really the only way, unless you.
So likely we will need some sort of meeting before the May meeting where all this is gonna be discussed and going over.
Well, you have time and you can digest a lot of what's in there now.
Yeah.
Because when I do report out at a meeting, it's basically going to be what's in there.
Mm-hmm.
So you have a little bit of time to.
But you need to report out before the May meeting, right? Because we're gonna, we want the evaluations in, so all of our scores, rankings, all that in for the May meeting before the election. That's why we did that.
For a public share out, we'd have to.
And you would have to report out prior to that, prior to us going on a teaching.
Yeah, well, I mean, what I report out is mostly contained in those documents, so if you could do some, you mean, you don't have to hit.
You don't have to submit it to me until afterwards.
When you do yours, you hit the share button, it goes to Chris. And so you don't have to share it.
I just don't think it's fair for you to do, to do a call out after someone's already done your evaluation when someone could ask a question that could change their perception of something you wrote.
Yeah, which means we can.
We'd have the change, we'd have the opportunity to change it.
Yeah, you don't sign it, so you can make whatever edits you want.
We put ourselves against a wall here, so I'm just trying to make sure we.
Well, because we don't have a two-way meeting.
Well, I mean, we have up until, um, the election, the week of the election to have another meeting if we wanted to.
I think then we'd be squeezing two meetings in within like a two-week period.
Well, we also don't have to do this before the election. I mean, I understand, I understand why we're doing it, but I mean, the, the potential is, the only worst-case scenario is one member of the committee would be.
Which you could result in a tie, you could result in a tie that way.
Right.
I can do the twenty-fourth.
I, I can't do the twenty-fourth.
Because we're changing the process.
Because the newest member wouldn't be involved in my evaluations, so two people would be an uneven number in the evaluation.
Yeah. I mean, I, my, my preference would be for us to complete it before the election.
Overall, and we say, okay, when somebody says three, somebody says four.
Then that's the evaluation.
No, but you know, like, we, so we have our individuals and then we have the, the, the one that we averaged in the past.
I, I have a lot of issue with us changing the way we do the evaluation the month before we do the evaluation.
I understand.
Even if it is the recommended way we should do it, you know.
Yeah, that's why I asked what she preferred, but obviously.
Yeah, no, I understand.
As a committee, we need to decide.
It's clearly we need to figure out the exact thing and if there is a situation where somebody can't make it to the evaluation, we have a tie. There should be something in place, but what do we do at that point? Maybe that's the time where we average, you know, so.
Right, so, uh, I guess we'll just have to come up with a date. We don't necessarily have to come up with it right this second, but we just need to know that we need a meeting somewhere at the end of, by the end of April.
May first, Don can't do the.
I, yeah, I.
Do the first?
I can't do the first of May either. I can do the twenty-fourth.
Cause the ele.
Or the seventeenth.
Seventeenth is for vacation.
I cannot do the seventeenth. I, I sick for.
Cause.
Want to cruise?
Cause the election is not until.
Election's the twenty-first, so you could have.
Is it really?
Yeah, it's late.
It's a little late, huh?
You could do something.
On the week of the thirteen.
Fifteen.
Yeah.
We have one on the eighth already, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we.
So that could be when I present, yes, and then the fifteenth could be.
That could be the actual executive session.
The public evaluation.
Private meeting and then it comes to public.
Yeah.
I like it, we can do three meetings.
Right, so that looks like you're gonna, you're already back?
May fifteenth?
Three meetings, everybody good?
You have three weeks, three meetings in a row.
Yeah.
Is one on the twenty-second?
You said the fifteenth? That's the reorganization.
Right.
Did you say the eighth?
That means I'll probably miss, have to miss a collaborative.
No.
No, we're gonna leave the eighth, we're gonna add the fifteenth.
Eight, fifteen, twenty-second.
Oh, three, okay.
So the eighth, fifteenth, and twenty-second.
But the fifteenth would just be a single purpose basis.
Exactly.
So May fifteenth is the public evaluation.
Yes. And so the eighth.
If you're performing.
Say that again, I'm.
The eighth, and the eighth is when I will.
Present, yes, right.
We can each schedule our own public evaluations if you, like, that would make you feel better. We can have one for Chris, we can have one for Ted.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay, I'm good. All right.
All right.
I have a feeling there's a collaborative meeting I'll be missing because of that, but I think I was gonna miss it anyway. I think it's maybe on the eighth.
I'll make sure when we do evaluations, I'll read it line by line.
Please do.
All right, so is everybody good on that subject?
Thank you.
So we now have the committee reports.
Okay, that's it for you.
I have nothing except as I was looking at the calendar, noticing that health and wellness. And we were gonna have a follow-up on that obesity survey business that George mentioned at the very end of the last meeting.
I mean, I have some data, but I don't think that Kathy, you know, that'll be.
I just forgot. Can you just make sure we get it on a subsequent agenda item, Kathy? Because whenever Gail sends the note around, I'm always like, oh, I don't have any.
And then after the, yeah, when you see the packet, like, oh, darn it.
Anything else?
No.
Nope, all right. Next is funding for robotics team and clubs.
So this came up, and it's really not just the robotics team, but, and I have the policy here. There are companies that wanna support several of our programs. But the robotics team, as they continue to progress with their skill and go to more competition, a lot of the other teams have sort of corporate support and all it means is their names on the back of the tissue or something like that. And they're not, I mean, our policy basically says following these guidelines, they tend to be both mainly and occasional commercial or fundraising activities related to the objectives of the schools, regardless of all exceptions or direct involvement of student employees. And that is just to be commercial or fundraising literature. But there's no, there's not the best of the best. And I wanted to make sure we were comfortable with taking that direction because I think that as we get more and more, like our Pro Start team, you know, there's restaurants that are supporting public support and if they actually got an opportunity to travel to a national competition.
I mean, the thing that comes to mind right away is that those logos would somehow constitute the school district's endorsement of those companies or places, which I think it's meant to be, they're supporting the schools, but, I mean, at first blush, that's the only thing, I mean, and then I guess, I'm trying to picture like, you threw me with the Pro Start thing because the robotics, I could see it kind of easily, but we just would have to have the opportunity available to anyone.
If, if, if it were unusual.
In other words, like, if we're gonna say, yeah, you can sponsor our Pro Start team, Trevi, then we have to say, be prepared for any other restaurant. Again, us, we, or we develop some kind of criteria that says you have to be, I mean, I could see it getting a little unwieldy.
I think it, in my mind, it would be more, it more for when, when they get ready, if they've reached a level of competition. So I, I think they're right up and saying, hey, we're supporting this club and whatever. I think it's, and maybe, maybe it's done differently where you sort of request, you'd like to. where you sort of request, we'd like to support, maybe it's not sure, but.
Are you thinking like a one-time sponsorship type thing or an annual based on an event? It's not, not like a year round like this, like our robotics club is sponsored by what? It's just all the top.
Yeah, no, I think it's more as they progress and you want these opportunities that you know that they're budgeted to pay for. And it's not always something that you want to say to families that they're paying for. It'd be a way to, so.
So can I make a suggestion that this is an ideal thing to check to the policy committee to take a look at and develop a policy related to this? Because I can picture certain vendors that we probably would not be receptive to.
That's what I was thinking.
Having, um, their name on, uh, on anything or being associated with. So, um, I think it, my recommendation would be the correct avenue here is send us to the policy committee, have them come back, um, after they've done some due diligence or.
Head out one of the districts.
Right.
Yeah, I was thinking, and maybe Jim would know.
Yeah, I think it's, it kinda turns me off when it made kids wear advertisements for grants. I mean.
I mean, it's, well, the robotics ones, you're, there's just a couple of big names and you could see like that. But when you talk about restaurants and like food, that gets really weird pretty quick. So.
I don't know.
You can find out.
Dino's never asked to put anything on anybody's t-shirt, so.
I mean, it's really not funding for robotics team and clubs. It's like, it's like corporate sponsorship is really what it is.
Which leads to funding.
Leads to funding.
Yeah.
Interesting.
But yeah, I think you're right. It's a policy.
All right. So the next thing under, last, next and last thing on the new business is the share off from the national conference that we all went to in. So I'll open it up to anybody that wants to, uh, you know, we started talking about it with, uh.
Yeah, I'm gonna take five minutes. That's it. I'm gonna have to take two minutes. I don't want, cause we could talk, I think that it was an amazing conference or, and, uh, we could probably talk for an hour about the stuff that we did. I mean, we all went to different, I don't even know what to call those things. The little.
Sessions.
Sessions, yeah. Oh, with the different sessions, different stuff. I went to one at the beginning of, uh, of the very conference that was talking about these two psychologists, both like professor emeritus psychologists, did a study. It's now in its sixth year where they were able to quantitatively connect board governance, good board governance with student achievement. And they just moved, they're up to sixty-five, um, schools that they're doing this, this thing. It was a spectacular session. And I found that very intriguing thinking about it and watching their, doing their graphs and talking about things and how they were, how they were trying to, um, make it quantitative and not qualitative. And so the majority of my, of my track for the sessions with board governance to see how it all kind of fit together. Um, and I just, no, I ca, I met some great people from I think four or five different states. I've, I've probably talked to fifteen different schools about the way they do business. And the good news about it was that I, I got a lot of validation about what we're already doing. There's a lot of discussion about collaboration and a good relationship between the board and the superintendent. I keep saying board because that's what, National School Board Association, the committee and the superintendent. Um, so I continue that. I just, I, I'm very excited to, um, continue discussing stuff that I learned and some of the ideas that were already in my head that now I've said, okay, eighty other districts do that and it works really, really well. So I'm looking forward to doing it. I'm trying to think if there's anything big. Um, we talked about the superintendent evaluation was a huge, like this one thing they broke board governance down into four pillars and one of them was a superintendent's evaluation. And, um, I don't think we do it wrong, but I don't think we're doing it the way a lot of other people do it. Um, so I'm interested in after we get done doing this cycle, talking about ways we can make it better. I think we can make it much more efficient and much more, I think, you know, right word, much more powerful for you, I think. But that's it. That's all I wanted to say. Good stuff. I'm, I'm very glad we all got to go. And I think that we need to continue. I think it's very important for us to do this kind of stuff.
Um, yeah, I would echo some of that and just say that some of the, really, one of the new things was that this app that they did, every session has, uh, the handouts and PowerPoints, any of that stuff. So it's kind of like, so it's, I was just looking up that session that you were talking about. So we could potentially share what we saw with other folks by just identifying that. Um, we also spent, so there were, I, I've talked to you both yesterday about some of the things that I saw, um, in terms of engaging, influencing teens was a session that I went to that I really enjoyed. One about the twenty twenty census, um, particularly, um, concerns about undercounting children and its impacts on public school funding. And I haven't been able to, I had reached out to the woman who chaired that session to figure out whether Barnstable County was one of those places that they thought was particularly undercounted. But they basically didn't, they kind of have these target areas in the country. And so I don't know if that, we're in that target area or not. Um, I also think we could start to look at cafeteria costs and options for our food. That was a big, there were a lot of, lots of information there and it sort of, um, made me feel like the only thing I really know or am involved in in our school lunches is approving the annual cost increase that we've done the last several years. And so that's obviously not sustainable going into the future, or maybe it's inevitable. I don't know. But I'm, I don't, I realize I don't understand necessarily or know what our costs are in any given year. I, I know I've seen it, but I just don't have those numbers at the top of my head. And, um, so there was, there were a lot of informational sessions around that. Um, a number of us also looked at, um, vaping monitors by this company called Halo that, um, we think have some real near-term immediate potential to, um, pilot in, um, I'm speaking for myself, I shouldn't say we, that I think have some, um, near-term potential to pilot maybe here in this school. Um, and, and then there was a lot of information about artificial turf, which reminds me that since we are not really in the driver's seat on that one, I think at some point, particularly after town meeting, I think the study about the artificial turf is on the warrant for this town meeting. But I'd like to make sure DPW is asked to come into a school committee meeting to brief us as to what is happening around that. Um, and I think anything that's happening at the school level is happening just in that health and wellness committee. Um, so anyway, that's just sort of more looking out in the future. I think those were the big, I guess, for me.
It's not just vaping either. It's CO, CO monitoring, CO two monitoring. You can actually alert when there's aggressive behavior in the bathroom.
So just to echo what, um, Nicole had said, I mean, I was very interested in looking at and talking with vendors in regard to, um, the artificial turf, um, primarily from an aspect of trying to get an understanding of what it really costs. So, you know, I've heard, I heard people say, well, you know, eliminates the ground maintenance and all of that. Well, as I, discussions I had with various vendors, that's not really the case. There is ongoing annual maintenance costs associated with it. And I can picture voters approving a bond issue or bond exclusion to pay for it upfront, then ten to fifteen years when it wears out and has to be replaced. Are they gonna be receptive, um, to spending that money or some, a portion of that money again to, um, replace it? Or is that gonna be looked upon as a school is needing, um, to somehow fund, um, that, uh, going forward? So all good questions that I think, um, to Nicole's point, we need to be involved with the DPW as they move forward with us. We can't just, um, advocate that to them. Um, now I was very impressed with some of the communications that, uh, some of the schools were doing, um, to the public as far as activities, events, accomplishments for the students. And I'll be sure to share the material that I gathered, uh, in regard to that. But, I thought, I thought it was great to have the opportunity to talk with other members who are dealing with similar issues. Um, you know, it was interesting talking to, um, an individual from Arizona, which is a right-to-work state, and their view in regard to, um, labor issues, um, et cetera. So, um, different perspectives that they were able to share and other individuals were able to share on common issues. So I think it was great. And, um, I mean, remember the person's name? Nicole had the opportunity to sit almost in the front row to see one of her favorite presentations.
You know who it is.
Sir Ken Robinson.
Yeah.
Who signed.
He was great.
A book, right?
I got them signed books too.
You got them signed books?
Yeah.
Um, so I think, what the hell?
Well, they're in circulation now. We've got, there's three books. There's three ladies.
I would like my pen then.
Yeah.
And I, and I tried. And when I got over there, he was, they'd just closed the line.
Oh.
So I, I missed out.
Would be there early. Yeah. So for, for everybody, so the more, I, I don't know if I had the chance to tell you, but I had mentioned to these guys, cause I, it was my first conference. I didn't know when. I was like, what happens on Saturday with this eight-thirty plenary? And they're like, well, there's usually a line before they open the doors. And I had no sense that there was gonna be five thousand people there. I mean, and so, um, we had, we were messaging the night before just like, okay, meet up at this particular spot. And so, um, I get there and I said, okay, I'm registering. I'll meet you at the entrance. Dawn was first in line.
It was awesome.
Saving a spot for me. He said, Nicole, is this good enough? Is this gonna be okay? So that you can get close enough to Sir Ken Robinson? And I was like, yeah. So it was very sweet and I was so grateful because, um, we had, we had cherry seeds for sure.
It was very good seeds. And I did a traditional Seinfeld trick where I did chat cut. So I just walked up and chatted with Nicole.
And we were like.
Usert my spot.
And I just showed up five minutes before it started.
Chris had a smart idea.
Well, we were like, keep coming forward, keep coming forward. We're all the way up front. So it was, that was very cool.
They had a choir, um, the senior, or I'm sorry, the, um, I gotta mess up their names, but they had a boys, a boys.
The Stillman Brothers, yeah.
From Georgia, which was amazing. And then on, on the second day, I wasn't there for Monday morning, but on the second day, they had the national champion student mariachi band.
Oh, yeah.
They were amazing.
From Texas. They were absolute, I can't even, I could not put into words how amazing that group of young kids were for the singing and the playing and the showmanship. It was amazing.
They looked like they were in their thirties. I mean, the poise and maturity, it was remarkable.
But the way they were able to play those string instruments.
Yeah, it was amazing.
I got a couple.
I was gonna say, did you?
Yeah, I got.
Oh, you got.
I got, yeah. I think we have a few short ones for that.
Yeah.
But it was, it was, it was.
I'll just go really quickly because it's not much, you know, they, a lot of stuff we all, we all did the same stuff as far as vendors and a lot of that stuff. Uh, but as far as some of the talks that I went to, me being me, won't surprise you, you know, I went to a lot of technical talks and, um, I went to some security talks and I went to things that had to do with the budget and how to purchase and manage tech through the budget. I did that for Jeff. Uh, and then some efficiency, uh, budget ones as well. And there were some really good things that came out of those, um, especially from security ones. I have some good things that I'd like to, and then as well as some of the tech ones, um, just in general. So I did go to one on social media, uh, that I learned a lot of stuff from, even with the stuff that I do. Person up there doing the talk was two to three times more knowledgeable than I was on social media stuff. So I did learn a lot from that one too and took some good notes. So, uh, it was a great conference. Everything about it. A lot of networking too. They're talking to some people from like five thousand plus student school districts and.
Two hundred and thirty-six schools.
It's just incredible.
Amazing.
Yeah, overall it was very, um, I mean, I got like choked up walking into the hall because it said, welcome public education leaders from America. And I was like, it's me. They're talking to me. You know, and it was just seeing all those other districts with these big, I, I don't know. I've, I felt very grateful to be in Mashpee, you know, because I just thought, I can't imagine all those schools, all those pro, you know, there were a lot of big, big problems and I just was very grateful to be where I was from. Didn't wish I was from anywhere else.
All right. Anything else?
No, sir.
No?
No.
All right. Well, thank you everybody for that. We're gonna move on to, uh, any other items. I do not have any. Uh, does anybody have anything that just came to mind? No?
Can I just say one quick thing?
Sure.
Just wanna make sure that, um, that we're gonna be providing childcare for the town meeting on May sixth. It's for children ages three to twelve. Maybe dropped off in the gymnasium at the high school starting at six forty-five. You're gonna have to pre-register your child. If you are interested in doing that, we have a Google form. So, um, this is in the paper, but it's, you know, it's going to our families as well. And we'll make sure we advertise it. Initially, it came out of the Mashpee and Puget University Committee wanting to sort of be more inclusive of families or parents who have young children and can't make it to town meeting. But it'll, you know, be staffed or school, um, employees.
All school employees.
So. So the school employees are providing the childcare?
There'll be school, well, we're supervising students and some high schools.
Okay.
Yeah, no, but the, there'll be a couple of school adults.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. O'Val.
All right, thank you. And we do not have any new public comments. So I just need a motion to go into executive session for strategy, tragic negotiation with non-using, uh, non-using personnel.
Non-union personnel.
And not to return to public session.
So moved.
Motion by Nicole?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any discussion? Dawn?
Yes.
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 Okay, yes. Thank you.